Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the May 21st, 2020 Legislative Meeting of the North Hills Board of Education to order. We will begin this evening by doing a roll call for attendance. Ms. Cozera? Here. Mr. Little?
Here.
Dr. Knowles? Here. Ms. Philpot? Here. Mrs. Ponyatowski? Here. Mrs. Reed is absent. Mrs. Rennebeck?
Here.
Mrs. Spade?
Here.
Mr. Witherall?
Here.
Dr. Manarino?
Here.
Dr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Matthew? Here. Mr. Muth?
Here.
Mrs. Pellet?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Yes.
Ms. Shuley?
Here.
Mrs. Rieger?
Here.
And I am also present. So I would then ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everybody. I'd like to welcome you again to the May 21st Legislative Meeting for the North Hills Board of Education. We'll begin this evening with board member comments, and I would like to announce that the board met an executive session on May 13th, 2020, and on May 18th, 2020, to discuss personnel and legal matters. I'd also like to say that this is our last board meeting before the end of the school year. So I wanted to say to everybody, congratulations, you did it. Thank you to all the students, parents, teachers, staff members, and administrators who made this virtual learning work. I know it hasn't been easy. I know it hasn't been ideal, but I am really proud of everyone at North Hills for putting in the work to make this happen and to make this work for our district. And congratulations to the class of 2020. I'm really looking forward to your graduation next weekend. I also wanted to mention really briefly that the school district held a food drive in conjunction with the township on the hilltop today. It was a big success, and I wanted to make sure to thank all the volunteers from the school board and the district who came outside to help today. And I wanted to give a special shout out to McIntyre student Carter Plowey, who collected donations for the food drive for his birthday and then delivered them today, which I thought was really awesome. Are there any other board members that would like to make comments this evening? Mr. Little?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize our administration. This past week, we were recognized by Ed Week, which is also known as Education Week, for our plan and our socially distant graduation ceremony. And I think that's such an amazing recognition. So I just wanted to take time to thank Dr. Manarino and the rest of the administration who put that together to make that happen. So hats off to you guys again. Thank you so much.
Ms. Philpot?
I just wanted to say that a couple of us helped this week with interviewing for some open positions that we need to fill. I think it was around 15 hours that we spent doing this. And I just thought that it was, it was really great, really nice to see the quality of applicants that we get as a district and to hear several of them talk about how highly we're regarded as a reason why they want to come here. And that several of them even mentioned how much they want to be part of our team as a district, that they've, they know people that work here and they want to be part of it. And so I really appreciate that school board members get to be involved in this process. I, I loved it. It was a great week.
Thank you. Are there any other board members with comments this evening? Okay, um, I would then like to ask if there are any members of the public who are logged into the Zoom webinar and would like to make public comments on agenda items only at this time? If you would, please indicate that by virtually raising your hand, and I will bring you up to speak. I'll just give our attendees a moment to find that button if they're interested in speaking. Okay, it does not seem like there are any public comments on agenda items at this time. So I will move on to the approval of minutes. I have a request for the board to approve them, or I'd write, I'd like to make a motion rather, for the board to approve the minutes from the April 30th, 2020, Committee Meeting with Action per the attached.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Dee Spade. I second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I'll now take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowles?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Thank you very much. I'd next like to move on to Dr. Manarino and the superintendent's report.
Before I start, Hannah and Ellie usually go before me. Do you have a report tonight?
Um, we decided that it was kind of very similar to the one last week, but we just want to say that we just, you know, are thanking our teachers and with continuing our education, and it's been going well. And it's the year like ends. Just want to thank our teachers and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah, because they put a lot of work into the online classes and changing some of their like lessons. So just wanted to thank them again for their hard work.
All right, thank you. Well, it's hard to believe that we're here, albeit virtually, but we're at our May Legislative Meeting with our last school day just weeks away. And the last two and a half months have never looked so different, and not in a good way. We've faced never before seen challenges, and we've been tested in ways that I truly hope are behind us. But we did it, and we made it through. And I couldn't be more proud of this district, our teachers, our families, our students, our administrators, for all of your hard work. And thank you all from the bottom of my heart. We are so excited about our commencement for next Saturday, and I think that our seniors are too. We held our cap and gown pickup parade today at the high school, and it was one of the best days I've ever had as a North Hills administrator. It was truly awesome today. The students showed up in their cars decorated with horns blaring. The teachers were outside with masks and with masks and signs. It was just a wonderful day. And so I'm so proud of our teachers, our administrators, our board members who lined the parking lot to cheer on our graduates. And I'm so very proud of this class of 2020. It was truly an awesome day for us. We had music playing all day long. It was a really a nice party atmosphere to celebrate them. So that's something that may just have to stick as a tradition because today was a really awesome day for our class of 2020. We continue to plan for next school year and what it might look like. We're hopeful that we're going to be back in traditional classroom settings in August. But we're also planning as best we can for the uncertainty that lies ahead. We're working on plans to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff members at all times. And it's also possible that we might move our first day, potentially starting earlier and potentially starting after Labor Day. But this all depends upon how the next month or so goes and the guidance that we received from the governor's office and from the Department of Education. We will be sure to communicate all the details as soon as we have them, as the summer is now upon us. Since our last meeting, we've also received word that, that when some welcome relief coming from the federal government, that we are entitled to $313,000 of the state's share of the elementary and secondary schools Emergency Relief Fund to respond to the challenges faced by the COVID-19 crisis. This money will allow us to hire in some areas where we otherwise would not have been able to, and ultimately maintain current class sizes without utilizing the proposed class size policy override that we had talked about at our previous meeting. So we are very excited about that. Once again, we're here. We've got five school days left, and we got this. So congratulations, everybody.
Thank you very much, Dr. Manarino. Next, we'll move on to education. We have a presentation on Curriculum Council from Dr. Beth Williams.
Dr. Manarino, are you going to share that, your screen? So I just wanted to give a very brief overview of some additional educational resources and materials that we're hoping to have in place for next year for the 2020, 2021 school year. And you can go ahead and hit the next slide for me, Dr. Manarino. Basically, what ended up happening this year is we had three departments that were on cycle to obviously make proposals and ask for requests for their materials and resources. And those departments included K through 12 art, K through six social studies, seven through 12 social studies, and seven through 12 mathematics. So what that process entails is they meet as they meet as a department, and then they present a proposal to Curriculum Council of materials that they think that they will need to enhance teaching and learning. So what it looks like is they go ahead and they make their proposal, and then I sit back down and I meet with them, and we go through all the items that they proposed, and I ask them to go ahead and prioritize those. Give them to me in a list of the most important items that you need. And then as we proceed deeper into the budget process, I meet back with them again and say, let's really talk about this list and narrow it down. Dr. Manarino, if you could hit my slide again? Thank you. So, so the first department, if you could go back one, Pat, thank you, is K through 12 art. And as you can see on your screen, it's an overview of what they've asked for. Most of the departments ask for software licensing, its renewals of licenses that they already use. I did not include that because they've been using it for multiple years. But the K through 12 art department asked for everything from a kiln for our pottery classes at the high school, clear down into asking for the art room at Westview to eventually be moved. It won't be moved next year, but it will eventually be moved from where it's at on the ground floor up until a vacant sixth grade classroom. So that will be a really, really nice move. So there's a lot of different equipment that that department asked for, and pending approval of the final budget, we're going to be able to provide that for them for their classes. K through six social studies is unique because they have been piloting a new curriculum for the past year through a company called TCI. I'm really, really pleased with their hard work and efforts. This is a great curriculum for K through six. It is a very hands-on, actively engaging curriculum that will be very relevant for the students. So as you can see, this is basically what their text or their subject material will look like by grade and what they'll be looking at from a curricular standpoint. And on the next slide, they are also going to receive student teacher subscriptions to access curricular materials. Now that we're going to have iPads K through six, if the teachers want to choose and implement those, there are web-based activities, there are stories, vignettes, other different things that they can do digitally, as well as having obviously the textbook and hard resources in the classroom. They'll also receive professional development. And the nice part about that professional development is it is a hybrid blend. There will be some in-person training, and they can also do virtual training as well. Seven through 12 social studies was in desperate need of some new textbooks for a couple of their different courses, predominantly their AP courses, because the AP content or curriculum has changed. So we have to update that to make sure that we're teaching that correctly so kids can be successful on that test. So they're going to go ahead and receive classroom sets of textbooks. They will also receive licenses. So every student can have a digital textbook that they can take home with them, for lack of a better word, on their iPad every single night. So I'm really excited about that as well. Seven through 12 math, they were one of the departments that only asked for some renewal of software licenses, but the biggest purchase that they're going to have is there's two computer labs at the high school that they work on for some of the higher level math courses or computer science courses. They desperately needed new desks. So they are getting new desks for those that will allow the computers to be there, the kids to really spread out with books and be able to work. So they're getting new desks. I also wanted to talk a quick overview about our academy at North Hills. Our current curriculum provider is no longer providing curriculum after this year. Pearson, they are moving in a different direction. So we've spent the past year looking for new content area, and we've decided to go with a company called Accelerate Educate. We really, really like them because first and foremost, the learning management system will be the same. The courses will look identical to what they look like because they use Buzz. So kids will be able, who've been online before and teachers have used it, it will go in and it will be very, very familiar because they've used it before. The only difference will be the content. We specifically chose a committee of us, teachers, administrators, school board members, IT members, Accelerate Educate, because it's automatically aligned to any changes with the PA standards. It mirrors the level of rigorous courses that we already offer in grades seven through 12. It's very, very hands-on. We're really pleased with it. So we're excited to kick that off next year as well. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you is the Project Connect expansion, which we've already talked about. It's going to be a huge addition or another resource for teachers and students to use. A new fleet of iPads are going to be provided for all students in K through 12. I think it's very important to mention to the fact that while five through 12 have had iPads, K through four, the elementary principals and Mrs. Matthew will be working very closely with a group of teachers to really talk about what is developmentally appropriate with how we're going to integrate those tools in those lower grades and what that's going to need to look like. So they're pretty excited. That committee is already ten least, I think, is just my thank yous. In fact, there you go. To the curriculum leaders, they do a phenomenal job all year long, running department meetings, answering questions. They're the liaison with the building administration, they're liaison with me. If they do a needs assessment or curriculum proposal, that's a lot of work and a lot of man-hours, and they did a phenomenal job. They really, really did that. Even if you're not on one cycle for a proposal or a needs assessment, they are still, you know, maintaining what's going on in the department. They are really collecting data on how students are doing, how the curriculum looks. So they work tremendously hard throughout the year. And they do a phenomenal job. So we're really pleased with that. And to the members of Curriculum Council, that is also a time commitment to listen to proposals and really ask thoughtful questions and participate in that engaging dialogue. So I just really appreciate their help and efforts as well. So pending final budget approval, those are some of the new tools that we'll be able to utilize next year to enhance teaching and learning.
Thank you so much, Dr. Williams. Does anybody from the board have any questions on that presentation?
No.
Yeah, I, I had not a question, but a point of clarification. The Accelerate Educate update, the online learning platform, that's, that's for our, our, our online learn, our existing online learning academy. It's not, it's not for this virtual learning that we've been doing the past two months. I just wanted to clarify that that's, that's what that is, and it's not, we're not getting a new platform for the people that, you know, are
Correct. Correct. That is our academy at North Hills, and that has been our online platform that we have been providing for students who, again, choose to pursue online education. It is not for virtual teaching and learning like we're doing right now. Correct. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll move on to the, the rest of the education items then. We have a request for the board to accept the grant award from Remake Learning and the amount of $1,000, and this will be used in a middle school social studies classroom. We have a request for the board to approve the 2020 to 2021 Services Agreement with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Per the attached, the AIU provides specialized educational services for Allegheny County's 42 suburban school districts, five vocational and technical schools, and numerous other organizations throughout the area. The AIU offers about 140 programs and services for defense, young children, students, and adults. And it is comprised of six divisions, each of which provide a wide range of services. The divisions include the following: Division of Early Childhood, Family, and Community Services; Division of Finance; Division of Human Resources: Strategic Operations and Initiatives; Division of Teaching and Learning Services; Division of Technology; Division of Special Education and Pupil Services. Items listed in the 2020 to 2021 AIU Educational Services Agreement are budgeted items in the 2020 to 2021 budget. We have a request for the board to award the bid for 55 CAD computers to Staples, who was the lowest bidder, for $73,948.60. The bids were opened on May 12th, 2020. Five bids were received for two computer models. And there is an attached bid tabulation for your reference. This purchase is included in the technology budget for 2020 to 2021. The last item is a request for the board to suspend the practice of requiring advanced placement students to take the AP exam for each course in which they are currently enrolled and allow students the option to choose whether or not they want to take the AP exam with the corresponding course. AP students would have the choice to take any of the AP exams for the courses in which they are enrolled. The district would pay 50% of the cost associated with each AP exam that a student elects to take. The remaining 50% of the associated cost for the exam would become the responsibility of the student. However, I did want to note that fee waivers for the tests are available to eligible high school students if they meet certain criteria, including if they are enrolled in or eligible to participate in a national school lunch program. If their family income falls below a certain range, if the family receives public assistance. And there are several other items bolted out there. So I would like to say that the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve education items two through five.
Dee Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Okay. Um, I will then take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera? Hi. Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowles?
I'd like to vote no on item five with the AP exams. I would prefer that we kept the policy where it is with the district covering 100% of the cost. But I will vote yes on items one through four.
Thank you. Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mathis, I will also vote aye, so the motion carries. And next, we'll move on to Mrs. Rennebeck and the AW Beatty Career School.
It is the request that the board approve the 2020, 2021 Operating Budget for AW Beatty Career Center, and the attached will further explain. The AW Beatty Operating Budget Bill is based on a five-year average of the daily average membership on March 1st, as verified by the member districts. The member districts are the primary source of funding support for the AWBCC Operating Budget. And the budget numbers are debt service $203,152, operating budget $965,369, for a total $1,168,521. And I move that the board approve Lori Rieger, School Board Secretary, to record each board member's vote on the AW Beatty Career Center's 2020, 2021 budget and sign on the behalf of the individual board members. This motion is made due to the voting process being conducted virtually as a result of the school closure.
Second?
Dee Spade?
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowles?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote aye.
And so the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve the AW Beatty Career Center Operating Budget for the 2020 and 2021 years.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Dee Spade?
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I will take a roll call vote now. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowles?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote aye on that. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Mrs. Rennebeck. Next up is Personnel, and Mrs. Spade?
Can somebody read that? I do not have it up on my screen.
I'll be happy to take care of that one for you. Personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve Personnel Items One and Two.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Yes, we'll now do a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowles?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up is Community and Intergovernmental Relations, and Mr. Little?
Thank you. So tonight, we'll be discussing the appointment of voting delegates for the Pennsylvania School Board Association, otherwise known as the PSBA Delegate Meeting that'll be held on Saturday, November 7th, 2020. So just to give you an idea, there, for my fellow colleagues, as you see per the attached, there's some information regarding this, but we are asked to appoint up to three members to serve as voting delegates. These responsibilities for these delegates, just to give you some information from that per attached, is to receive reports from the PSBA President, Chief Executive Officer and Treasurer, receive the election results for the PSBA leadership, including governing board officers, at-large representatives, and sectional advisors, consider proposals recommended by the PSBA Platform Committee, and adopt legislative platform for the coming year, and consider and act upon any proposed changes to the PSBA bylaws. So we must submit our certification for voting delegates to the PSBA no later than August 31st of this year.
Thank you. So ideally, I think we would put this on the June 4th or June 11th agenda to vote on.
Does anybody want to volunteer to participate?
I would actually like to nominate a couple of people. I would, I think it would be appropriate if Mrs. Mathis, Mrs. Spade, and Mrs. Cozera represented us because of their roles as the president, vice president, and the policy liaison.
Thank you.
I would.
Yeah, I would be happy to do it. And I can say that, you know, I know Mrs. Cozera is going to be speaking at Advocacy Day, so I don't want to steal her thunder on that, but she actively participated in that. And then Mrs. Spade and I have been on a weekly call with the PSBA leaders from our section ever since, I don't know, when that started, I guess, around March, when the coronavirus closure started, so.
I think it would be really, really important to keep that continuity of all that work that you've been doing.
I appreciate that, and I would love to be on it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Little. We will now move on to Policy, and Ms. Cozera?
So we have eight policies up for second reading tonight. Following our meeting last week, Dr. Manarino made a couple of changes to the, the one that is under item eight, item seven, but the rest we didn't receive any comments about, and so they're unchanged. So the policies are, the revisions are Policy 310 and 410, which involve abolishing a position for administrative and professional employees, 224, care of school property, 412, evaluation of professional employees, 504, employment of classified personnel, 708, lending of school and equipment and books, 904, public attendance at school events, and a new policy, Policy 838, professional development. After, I'll read the motion, and then we can go over the changes. The superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve Policy One, Items One through Eight.
And I will second that, Dee Spade.
Thank you. Okay, so. Any discussion? Sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. The, just the, the changes that were made, and Dr. Manarino, please feel free to jump in if you want to clarify this a little further. We had some questions about whether our board approved small games of chance, is that the correct term, the groups who do fundraising for like the, the sports. Is that the correct term? The um, the groups who um, do fundraising for um, like the, the sports booster events. They're able to fundraise at school events. So um, Dr. Manarino clarified that the board prohibits illegal gambling. Um, under the authority on this um, on this policy. So that clarifies that that, that, that is not, that act, action is not illegal. And so therefore not prohibited by the um, the policy. I don't know if anybody else has any question, comments, but um, I just want to make sure that was clear. There were no other, as I mentioned, there are no other changes or comments received on any of the other policies.
Is there any other discussion? No? Okay. I will then proceed with the roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote aye. And so the motion carries. And then I will uh, ask you if you're able to provide a legislative update, Ms. Cozera.
Yeah, um, thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about the advocacy day event um, that we attended on um, the 18th of May. I believe it was. Um, so the um, no, it was the, what day was it? The, the 11th, I think. Um,
The PSBA?
I don't know. Go ahead. It was within the past few weeks. All the days run together. Um, it was the day that it happened. And, and so the Pennsylvania School Board Association puts on an advocacy day. And they had planned to do it at the end of March, um, but that was canceled because of um, events. And so they decided to do their very first virtual advocacy day. Um, and so we were able to, uh, Mrs. Mathis and I participated in this event. And um, we were able to meet with um, Senator Lindsey Williams and Representative Sarah Namarado on that day. And then we scheduled a separate meeting with um, Representative Adam Ravenstall um, for a different day because he wasn't available. And so um, we are really lucky in this region that we have such great um, representative in our, um, in Harrisburg. Because um, Senator Williams is, um, she comes from a um, a school background. Um, she's, you know, that's, she has a lot of knowledge about education. So talking to her um, about some of the um, the things that she's pushing for, in particular, she's on the um, education committee. So she's kind of right in the heart of, of making sure that our school and all the schools in this area get, um, get the attention and um, funding that we need. And um, understands she's definitely able to advocate for us. So that's great. Um, and it was good to be able to talk to um, Sarah Namarado and Adam Ravenstall about some of the other community type efforts that um, they've engaged in. And um, you know, they've, they've talked about, you know, fundraising and um, just like outreach for some of our um, you know, people that are suffering in particular during this time. Um, which includes a lot of, of students who rely on the school for resources and that sort of thing. So uh, um, there are a lot of um, funding concerns at this time. Obviously, we talked a little bit about that in connection with the budget um, meetings and our budget concerns last week or at the last board meeting. So um, it's just, it's, and nobody knows the answers to um, you know, what, what things are going to look like, which obviously makes budgeting hard. And um, and it just makes it hard to know how to prepare. So um, being able to, you know, talk to our state legislators and make sure that they understand our concerns. And um, you know, that we can reach out to them and vice versa has been um, pretty, pretty awesome. Um, I don't know if you have anything in particular you want to add, Mrs. Mathis. Um, I just kind of wanted to um, you know, just kind of mention that we did that and um, and that it was a good experience, I think.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I think, and thank you for taking the time to participate. And I, I think like one of our most important roles as, as board members is to be advocates for public education. And to um, to maintain um, relationships with um, with those um, in government. And you know, I guess the only other thing I would add is that it was interesting to hear on the call some of the other concerns that are similar to ours. That other school districts are going through right now in dealing with the budgeting process and the uncertainty of what's going on.
Yeah, definitely. It's, it's a struggle, I think, um, for everybody, unfortunately. So um, you know, we um, definitely expressed that we, public education should be a priority as far as state financing goes. So that's, I know it's important, everybody here. So, um, so that was good. And we'll keep up that, that conversation as time goes on.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We'll move on to finance now and Dr. Knowlish.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to start first with a couple of informational items. Um, first is about the property tax payment plan. Um, we've worked with the township and the school district together to um, provide an additional option for taxpayers this year. Um, if you choose to pay your taxes in full before uh, August 31st, you will still retain your 2% discount, which is, and that's, that's not a change. That happens every year. Um, but that, what we are adding is if you would prefer to pay your taxes in installments. Uh, you will not receive the discount, but you can pay the face value spread out over four months. Um, August 31st, September 30th, October 31st and November 30th. Um, so we would pay 25% each of those months. And uh, so we hope that maybe this will help make things a little bit easier for people. Uh, we'll have details out about this on our site. And I'm sure that the um, Ross Township will be spreading that word as well. But uh, we wanted to let you know that, that that was happening. Uh, and I should also mention that these are only for homeowners that have the homestead exemption. So it would, it applies to your primary residence uh, only. The second informational item uh, is uh, I wanted to thank the, um, those of you that attended the Public Budget Committee meeting, which was last week. Uh, Mr. Moos presented, I think, a pretty good detailed overview of all of our, of where we were with revenues. And uh, we're going to continue the conversation. We have two more public budget committees scheduled. One is on May 28th and another one is on June 2nd. And those both will take place before we uh, bring the final budget to the agenda on June 4th. And then vote uh, to approve it on June 11th. So there's uh, ample opportunity for public participation. Uh, if there, anyone would like to make additional comments about the budget. Um, and obviously, as Dr. Manarino mentioned earlier, it's starting to evolve and change from what we did in the proposed final budget. And I mean, we're all just very relieved and happy that it's, it's changing it a good way. Um, but you will definitely see some changes uh, by the time we vote on the final, final as to what the proposed one was. So moving on to that, uh, I'd like to go to our um, uh, action items. We have the uh, general fund bills, the food service fund bills, and the budget transfers. All of those are um, there is uh, much in line with what we would expect. There's nothing uh, of particular note there. Uh, the next item is a bid award. This is for the warehouse roof replacement and heavy maintenance work for the roof of the administration center. And the maintenance garage. Um, the warehouse roof is 30 years old. We're constantly repairing it. And uh, there's uh, some leaks and leak issues at uh, the administration building and the maintenance garage. So that's something that we definitely need to take care of, even in a tight budget time. Um, so we are recommending that the board award the bid for replacement of the warehouse roof. And the heavy maintenance for the roof with the admin and maintenance to triangle roofing. They were the lowest bidder at $212,345. Um, Triangle has also performed the roofing workforce on Westview a few years ago. Uh, so uh, I think we uh, can uh, uh, accept their bid with confidence. And these funds will come out of the Capital Project Fund. So I would like to make a motion to approve. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve finance items two through five.
Dee Spade, I will second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any discussion? No. Okay, I'll proceed with the roll call then. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Knowlish. Um, we don't have anything under support services this evening. So I will move on to public comments on non-agenda items only. Um, if there's anybody uh, attending the webinar who would like to make comments on non-agenda items, please raise your hand virtually. I'll just give you a minute to look for the button. Okay, does not seem that we have any participants with questions this evening. So I'll just move on to a couple of announcements. Um, Dr. Knowlish mentioned the next public, public budget committee meeting, which is scheduled for Thursday, May 28th on Zoom. Um, the next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, June 4th, 2020 at 7:15 PM. At this time, that's still scheduled via Zoom. I think at, at some point in the future, we need to look at um, whether we want to move these meetings back in public or not. And but for now, it's scheduled for Zoom. Um, so there being no further business, I would then move to adjourn the meeting this evening. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.